Called to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, May 7th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And you can stand, but this is a happy day. We would like to wish Rosie Cadman a happy 99th birthday today.[35.11][35.11][applause] And when you're ready, roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Oh, excuse me, Mayor Protam Lovell?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
One absent Councilmember Schickling.
Thank you. Are there any announcements or written communications?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We will have the department head reports, and we're going to start with Public Works Director Jackie Cordiero. I think she's to be -- there she is.
Hi there. How are you guys? Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordiero, Public Works Director. If you haven't done so, please go visit JMF. The buildings are freshly painted. The new windows were installed today. It looks fantastic. The crew will continue working inside the restrooms. If you're out there, please thank them for their hard work. Also, the public works crew started the Front Street washdown routine that they do during the summertime. They start this process at 4:00 a.m. and they do this cleaning so early to not disrupt businesses and visitors. We finished painting the Tremont curb red and settled the no parking lettering. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact myself or Fire Chief Allegria. The crew did fire extinguisher CPR and first aid training. As you know, there's times where they're working in the field and they may be the first on scene, so this was really great training for them to have. Currently, the mole restrooms are being worked on. This work started today. They will be partially closed and opened to accommodate the boats coming in and out. The work will consist of heavy cleaning, some repair and replacement of counters, floors, and urinals, and then some of the work will continue on to next week. Finally, we are working really hard to get all the city's infrastructure and facilities for summer, so there'll be a lot of work occurring around the city. So please be patient, and if you see the public works crew, please thank them. They're working really hard. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, and thank you for addressing the bathrooms, the mole bathrooms. Yeah, that's awesome. Any questions of Jackie? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Carstafan Harbor Master. Since my last report Tuesday, April 16th, patrol moored 467 boats for a total of 2,110 nights. Patrol warned and advised 41 individuals of municipal code violations, issued one citation, responded to 10 medical calls, assisted Baywatch three times, assisted the sheriffs four times, assisted the general public 89 times, and completed 289 security checks of the facilities and surrounding waters. In preparation for Memorial Day weekend and summer itself, you'll start to notice some changes in the harbor, which include the installation this week of the Yacht Club float and the Tuna Club floats, the arrival of the Shoreboat float today and the City End float, which is scheduled to arrive tomorrow. These floats, both the end float and the Shoreboat float, are slated to be installed later this week. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. In April, we had 84 total calls, 54 medical, and 30 fire. I would like to thank Andrea Morrison, who goes above and beyond for us on, like she did Saturday, International Firefighters' Day. She brought 25 burritos, coffee, orange juice, fruit. She does it then, she does it on Thanksgiving, she does it Christmas, she does it a couple times a year, so thank you. Tell Andrea, thank you very much. She always takes very good care of us.
That's sweet.
And there's still just a little bit left.[322.58][322.58][laughter] Our open house went great, 10 to 2 Saturday. I just got a couple of pictures from the event, so just to show -- so we said ended up putting the barbecue right out front. We had hamburgers and hot dogs, and people were just coming in off the street and taking a tour, and we probably fed over 100 people easy.
Wow.
Big shout out to Olivia and Vaughn's for donating most of what we had cooked, so Vaughn's there. There's a picture of a slide for Vaughn's to thank them. So there's that, the front and the back. We had most of our guys here, so no one was really left unattended. The kids got to sit in the trucks. There's only one instance where we hit a siren when my little nephew was in front of it.[387.43][387.43][laughter] He went running, but you'll see him later in the slides. It ended up working out. So we did a little mini obstacle course. The kids dragged hose, they got to spray water, they had a blast doing it. Everybody enjoyed the old fire truck. We got Bodie in there, he sprayed the water, told his mommy's going to be a firefighter one day. Lot of pictures taken, and our little open house sign, so once people were walking up and down, they came in. Vaughn's was huge for helping us do that. The new firefighter Shane Machado got to dress up his mom. And then that's how all the kids ended leaving.[437.81][437.81][laughter] There were a couple fits on the front apron, it was great. So the kids got all -- were all tired out. It was fun.
Excellent.
We look forward to doing that again. Tomorrow, I go pick up the new ambulance and get the radios in, and then depending on the barge and when we get it there, it should be here by this weekend. And then on Tuesday, I'm planning something next Tuesday. I'll let you -- I'll text you or email you where the tradition is, one of the first times it's delivered to the station, one of the first times it's backed into the station, you have to push it, like the horses used to back in the horse carriage. So we'll put it out there, and we all push it into the station, and I'll let you know a time and a date. I don't want to do it till I for sure notes, but I believe it'll be Tuesday.
Okay, that's great.
And just remind everybody, weed abatements coming up soon, June 1st. We'll be out doing fresh inspections after that. Any questions?
No, thank you. Here comes Captain King.
Evening, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Since our last meeting, we had 121 observations made by the deputies, 72 calls for service, 13 traffic stops, and five pedestrian stops. We made two arrests for drunk and public, there were three felony warrant arrests, sorry, one arrest for stolen vehicle, and one arrest for felony vandalism. I'd like to thank the Catalina Island Yacht Club, the Catalina Beverage Company, and Sheriff's Youth Foundation for donating 200 bicycle helmets. So we should be getting those next week, and then once I make sure that I'm getting them, I'll arrange this with the school to have a presentation, kind of go over the different rules of the road for the kids, and make sure they all get a helmet and don't give them an excuse to not be wearing a helmet, so. That's planned for hopefully not this next week, but the following week.
Excellent.
Any questions?
No, but I have something I want to read. I received an email from a concerned citizen. Good afternoon, Councilmember Ponce. On behalf of the many of us who routinely volunteer to do community cleanups and who give our time to youth projects in Avalon, I am writing with a request, "Over the course of the prom weekend, celebrants from Avalon School partied in trash Three Palms overlook area. This is an area that frequently is used for public drinking by underage partiers, and to add to that, an area which frequently needs significant cleanup of the debris left behind. In fact, it seems there is an ongoing contest to see how far down the hill one can toss the empty or near-empty cans and bottles of alcohol. The prom weekend partying brings to the forefront several very dangerous situations, including underage drinking, opening containers in public, and of course littering. Very likely drunk or impaired driving also occurred. Many in the community are inclined to blame a visitor for the mess we find, but it is unlikely that a visitor would leave the confines of their hotel or vacation rental late in the evening without access to a rental golf cart and scale the hill to party on Wrigley Terrace or Hogsback. This is definitely a local problem and one which we need strict enforcement on by the Avalon Sheriff's Department. Please, as a council, ask the sheriffs to make policing these party zones a priority, including issuing the citations and making the arrests that will protect us all from the ongoing destruction of our beautiful town and the likely resulting death or injury to some of our youth." And I just wanted to say that before I got this, I had been discussing what some people who remember the days where you'd be up at Buena Vista Point, and sheriff's cars would come this way, sheriff's cars would come this way. I witnessed that when I lived up at Mauna Kea, when they would clear the area. It just doesn't seem like that's happening, so it would be really nice if we could do a little bit more.
There's not a single call for service that we don't respond to, and that's something that just doesn't happen.
But that's my point being is that if you know --
If the implication is we're not responding, that's the other case.
But my point is that if you know that something's going on in this town, that you should patrol those areas, it's just --
I understand that, and yeah, we do --
That's, yeah.
Yeah, we do patrol, and it turns out we can't be there for every situation.
And I understand you can't be there for every --
We rep the cross quite a bit, and you know, Hogs Gate. We understand the problem, you know, Three Palms, as well as the businesses on Front Street. It's trying to get the resources spread out enough that we can handle everything possible, and it's -- I understand that. I have Facebook as well, and I get those, and it's frustrating to read that more than you know, but it's a problem we know about and we're trying to deal with it. We're really trying to deal with underage drinking in town. It's a big, serious issue, but we hope that, you know, parents get behind. It's an unfortunate thing, as I'm often talking to parents about it, and they're telling me to kind of go away, and you know, it's just not something we can deal with or let go, unfortunate. But yeah, I agree with you. It needs to be handled better.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Captain.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. You may have noticed a new outrigger canoe resting on Middle Beach. This is our freshly acquired Malalo outrigger, replacing the one lost last year. Thanks to the leadership of Paul De Meyer, the team successfully fundraised for its replacement. We extended our gratitude to sponsors Megan Wright of Catalina Island Hospitality Company, Camarada Vega and Taylor Marones of Catalina Business Enterprise, Gary and Kelly Johnson of Ace Clearwater, and Paul De Meyer's very own Volcano Miss Cottage. Last Saturday, we held a blessing for the new canoe, led by De Meyer and attended by approximately 30 paddlers and the sponsors. This marks the official beginning of the paddling activities for the Catalina Island Outrigger Canoe Club, and if you're interested in joining, sign-ups are available at the City of Avalon website. There's a seat for everyone. On May 4th, the Old Man Rugby Festival made a significant splash, drawing in 10 teams and over 250 participants. When considering the addition of family and friends, the impact on our economy during the offseason surged to around 400 people. The island was experienced for the first time from teams from outside of California, including from Arizona, Nevada, and even Boston. It's yet another fantastic event for the island during our offseason, so we're happy to know that they've re-upped to come back again next year. Despite the wind picking up on Cinco de Mayo, Avalon City Celebration honoring Mexico's victory over the French in the Battle of Puebla in 1862, as well as showcasing Mexican culture, was the focal point of the day. Father Dario from St. Catherine of Alexandria led a mass, bestowing blessings upon our city, its inhabitants, and all its visitors, praying for a bountiful and prosperous season ahead, but most importantly, that we continue to all love one another. The festivities continued as more than 100 community members, including our esteemed Council member, Yacenia De La Rosa, delighted us all with traditional folklorical dances. We extend our gratitude to the teachers and students of K through 3rd grade classes, Lord historic from Islanas Con Chispa, Briana's Marones from Ballet Folklorico Quezal, and Victor Martinez from Grupo de Ballet Terra Bella. Special appreciation also goes to Stephen Hall for his role as our bilingual host. This event holds a special place in my heart because it truly embodies community participation and engagement in the community celebrating together. Join us this week for the Catalina Arts and Crafts Festival, hosted by the Catalina Arts Association. Setting up was going to begin this Thursday, so you'll see them setting up downtown along Front Street, with over 40 booths ready for business from Friday through Sunday, May 12th. It's the perfect opportunity to find a unique gift for Mother's Day. Don't miss out on our final opportunity to enroll in T-Ball. T-Ball offers a playful approach to learning the basics of the sport tailored to different age groups. Squirts designed for children aged 3 and 1/2 to 5, sluggers for those aged 6 to 8. Ensure age-appropriate instruction and enjoyment. Secure your spot today for just $35 through the City of Avalon website. Also, along with that, is we have our longest youth activity group, Avalon Youth Baseball, kicks off this Wednesday, May 15th, up at Joe Machado Field at 5:00 p.m. Come support local kids ages 9 to 14 years old as they engage in exciting competitive games. It's a perfect community outing and an excellent way to entertain yourself through the night. Do you guys have any more questions?
Just when does the contract with Santi for Joe Machado come in? When is he going to be in business, you think?
Currently, right now, he has the contract.
Yes.
He's getting the place up and ready. He will be waiting to -- we have a couple of things with the Health Department we have to shore up, and he's hoping to get that done within the next two weeks.
Excellent.
So yeah, so hopefully by the end of May, by Memorial Day weekend, he'll be up and going.
Well, that was really nice that Lou L. Larry's and --
Endemic?
Endemic did the hot dogs and hamburgers and the beer and all that. That was wonderful that they had something up there. That was great. Yeah, thank you.
Perfect.
Questions? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I have a couple kudos this evening. First off, I'd like to thank SoCal Edison, CRNR, Blue World, Care Catalina, volunteers and city staff for the Earth Day cleanup that was held on April 27th. I wasn't able to make it, but it sounded like it was a great event, and we're hoping to do more like them in the future. Second, today, I want to thank Jamie, Miguel, and Ephraim. We got nine abandoned vehicles, autoettes off the island today, so they're on the barge and ready for shipment, so that's very exciting. Took a lot of work, so I want to appreciate them. And then on May 16th, Thursday, May 16th, is our next vehicle hearing. It's going to be a full day, and it starts at 9:00 a.m. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. Happy to report that we have a date set for Key Code to come out and upgrade our chamber A/B system. They will be on island June 5th to the 17th, so the chambers will be occupied with them for that period to make those necessary renovations. So in the interim, if everyone can just remember, speak into the microphone so everyone can hear that's viewing remotely. And then other than that, just a quick revenue update. TOT for March was down, but down only around 2%. Again, while it's never great to say it's down, that does put it kind of within that range where we used for the budget estimates from the last meeting, closer to the lower end of the range, which was down 5%, but again, within that range. So hopefully, there's nice weather ahead and strong numbers May and June. And other than that, we are presenting tonight on the CIP budget. This night's meeting's going to focus more on kind of the current year CIP project updates, with the next meeting focusing on some of the bigger projects looking to begin construction next fiscal year, as well as some new projects for next year.
Great, thank you. See you soon. City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. First of all, I just want to say that the Planning Commission application date has come and gone. We have 12 Planning Commission applicants, so that's great that we have that many people that are interested for open positions. So Mayor will go through those, my understanding, and you'll make those selections with the idea that we'll have an appointment at the June 18th meeting, and those new commissioners or reappointed commissioners will sit at their first meeting in July. So it's great that we have that much interest. The next thing we have, I just want to acknowledge the efforts of the Rotary Club with their clothing drive. We have a little presentation that Councilmember Ponce will kind of walk us through, but just want to say that any time that we can remove this many or this much material from the island, gently used clothes, and it also goes to a good cause, is a great thing. You know, we're working hard to keep things out of the landfill, so. Michael, let me see if I can -- is it down here? Do we have the other one, Matt? Do we have one for the Rotary? So this is the other one. See, we're all getting caught up in these presentations since Matt's doing this, so. We have another one, Matt. Michael, if you just want to walk us through this, I'll go through the slides for you.
Well, Rotary felt that we had a need for a clothing drive. We were able to get a group of our interact kids and rotarians and locals, and we collected 7,000 pounds of clothing, shoes, blankets, is what the express told us, or not the express, Catalina Freight Line told us when they shipped it over. So these kids gathered all this stuff, and we stored it in a hotel room at the Canyon. They boxed it up. When we got done with all the boxes we had, we just started leaving it in bags, and there we go. These kids are amazing. They're going to make a big impact in the real world when they go out into the real world, and it's great being with them. But we spent the afternoon from 10 to 2 collecting. Thank you Gabby Marones for the truckload of things that you packed nicely. And then this one gentleman here that was in the flower shirt, his name is Matthew Batista, Naylor Batista, and he is on the Board of Directors with Well in the Desert. And that is who we were sending our items to. They are located in Palm Springs, so we loaded up the truck. First, we loaded up the rooms, took that all to the freight line, they barged it over in a container, and then we unloaded the container, and then loaded the truck. And Nicole Hoensteen from the Canyon drove the truck. It was a sight to see. But we drove out to Palm Springs, and Matt had sent out a request on Facebook looking for volunteers to help us unload. And we got there not knowing what we were going to expect, but we had a nice, large group, which took us an hour, hour and a half to load the U-Haul, because most of it was palleted in, but everything else we had to take off the pallets and fill the sides, because we only get so many. This took us about an hour, hour and a half. To unload the trucks in Palm Springs, it took us less than a half hour. We filled up, they have a house they use, a shelter for a couple of families, and we used that garage to put all this stuff in. And it was a great experience, and they were very thankful. There we are, loading up a garage. But yeah, it was a great experience. It was nice having two different communities from two different areas coming together to do the project, so it was just -- we felt, us rotarians felt really good that we were able to do this. But yeah, Avalon Freight sent it over, they didn't charge us for it. And then once again, Olivia, thank you for what you did for us, for donating the snacks for the kids in the morning when we started collecting everything. And then also, I'm not sure what the newsletter is, but a newsletter in Palm Springs posted a great little story about the two communities coming together and doing the work that we did, yeah. So it was a real nice experience, and it was nice being a rotarian doing it, so.
Very successful. Thank you.
Good job, thank you. And then Matt, if you could queue up the Coast one, I'll hit a few other issues, topics. We just wanted to give you a brief update on the first month of Coast, but before we get to that, just wanted to bring to everyone's attention that we have a few events this week and next week that will impact traffic and movement around town. First, I guess, and foremost, is Monday, May 13th, next Monday, the Carnival Ferenza will be arriving here for its first of seven trips to Avalon. This is a higher-capacity cruise ship. We have rearranged the queuing area for them out there. We have volunteers lined up to help assist in move pedestrian traffic, and we will do our best, but we're in a learning mode too, so please be patient as we have this new cruise ship join us. Carnival has seven voyages, like I said, scheduled for this this year, so each one will really try to throw as many volunteers out there as we can to manage the lines. The second issue, or the next two issues, and Bob Greenlaw will get into more detail later in the meeting tonight, that'll impact traffic, is that we're going to place some temporary pedestrian traffic management system at the area of the Elbow to try to control pedestrians from jaywalking and crossing over that. This is part of a much larger test that will roll out over the next coming weeks or month to test for a while to manage both sides of that street in that area. That'll include widening of the sidewalk on the commercial side, removal of those four parking spaces, and a new area in front of the trailhead that will better manage, we think, the traffic and the congestions in those areas. Bob will get into more details on this and hopefully answer any questions that you have. The second area that we're going to be working on here, starting already this week, is the Crescent Hillside project. This is going to involve either a closure at times of Crescent or a reduction to one lane in that area, just right across from the Yacht Club there. We are very lucky, and Bob Greenlaw's done a great job of finally getting a contractor that's both skilled, knowledgeable, and able to do that project, so we're very excited to start that. And then finally, I just wanted to, you know, touch base on Coast. April was our first full month of Coast. The beginning, we didn't start, they didn't start until the 4th or 5th, and it was a quiet opening to begin, but let's see if I'm out of range here. So this, you'll see, is the daily passenger count. As Coast got going, you can see it started very slow until the word got out, and then ramped up to where, you know, we were seeing -- you know, we were seeing a number of days above two hundred passengers per day. Here is a perspective of the number of passengers per day for each service day of the week. As you can see, obviously Saturdays and Sundays are big days, but Tuesday equals a Friday here, because of the, mainly because of the cruise ship. Service hours peaks during the middle of the day, the most number of passengers. And all these statistics are brought to us through Coast and through Circuit and their system that can provide them. So as we look for the month, we, they had four thousand eighty-three total passengers for the month of April. To get a perspective on what that means as compared to twenty twenty-two, it's a twenty-two percent increase than last year, so forty-eight percent increase of the month of April last year. Pretty similar where we were weather-wise last year to this year, and so I think that this is an extremely encouraging sign that they got off to this strong of a start. These are interesting, the top ten pickup locations, so where people are calling and getting picked up. At Botanical Gardens is number one, and, you know, you can see those as they, as they go down. Obviously, Descanso, the Country Club, and the Mall. And same thing with the top ten drop-off locations. Botanical Gardens, Wrigley Memorial, Canyon Inn, Descanso Beach Club, The Express, Hermit Gulch. So we, we've seen more and more use by the campers, loading up their gear and going up there, and also going up to the golf course with golfers. So just briefly, statistics, those are the total number of rides. We saw the number of passengers. These are the total number of rides. The average wait time is eight minutes and twenty-eight seconds, and the average unique users, which are new users, and I think we'll keep seeing that number increase, nine hundred and eleven, with a, with a driver rating of four point eight nine. This is a new system to the drivers, too, so they're, they're just getting used to it, and will continue. And here, again, we just want to encourage people to download the app. We have this QR code in a number of different places throughout town. It's down in the window at the Mall. It's here. You can go to the city website, cityofavalon.com backslash coast, and you can go to ridecircuit.com and load the app. The app is by far the best way to access the service. The number, phone number is not the best way. It goes through an off-site, an off-island system, so we would encourage people, strongly encourage people to use the app. And it's still a new system. We're a month into it. We know we've had, we've received some complaints. We're working on addressing some of those issues. Hopefully, we'll be able to address as many as possible, and if not, overall, we think, you know, we're in a much stronger position than we have been in the past, so. Any questions?
No, but Devin, thank you. Mayor, I just, I'm sorry, you were going to say something. The fare to Pebbley Beach for the people that live out there, because there are families there, and that four dollars, I think, is a lot. I don't know, it seems, if it's, I don't know if it's based on the amount of time or the amount of energy used, but I mean, if you're going up Whitley, you're using more electrical energy than you are if you're going to Pebbley. So I didn't know if there was a way to address that for, for residents of Avalon to only be charged the two bucks, because if a family of four, that's, that's almost like getting a cab.
Well, we're, we're trying to, I mean, right now, it's two dollars per ride wherever you're going. We're trying to cap that, I believe. Do we have the cap at six dollars for a family? So the most you would pay is six dollars.
Okay, so all I remember is hearing it was four dollars out there, and it was four dollars to Hamilton Cove.
That would be two people, two people to go out there would be four dollars.
Okay, and cap at six. Okay, good news. Okay, I hadn't heard that. Okay.
Well, we'll continue to look at it.
We solved that already. That was fantastic.
I had the opportunity to take Coast home from the boat last week, which was great. I know, it's like, you know, and the, talked with the driver a little bit about how it was going and what his thoughts were, too. He said the most interesting part so far that he's trying to figure out answers to is, one, people who are wet or sandy or coming out of the dive park with gear. And so, looking at those vehicles and noticing how nice the seats are currently, and how quickly saltwater and/or gear would mess that up, I don't know if there's ways to retrofit any future vehicles, or a single vehicle with a bench seat as opposed to the nice seats that are there. That may benefit it possibly, and might make sense for it if that's a common pickup location. And the other one that he had was the number of people that want to just put one person in, but then take up the whole vehicle for luggage. And so, I don't know that we necessarily want this to become a luggage service, so maybe having information for people of, if the taxi is a great opportunity for that to use, or there's luggage service if you want to utilize that as well, maybe having that resource available on the vehicle for them to share with people might help as well, so. But I'm guessing that they're going to end up sandy and wet for a good chunk of the summer, so I don't know if it's a requirement to have a towel, or you have to have something you can put on the seats, or maybe seat covers that would help address that for people.
Is that something that could pop up on the app when they're ordering it, about no sand?
It should, yeah.
Minimum of luggage, if they could do that for us on that?
Yeah, that's a great point. We have regular meetings with the Circuit team, so we'll talk about that, of what, what we can and can't do on the app. I mean, they are finding we're more unique than some of their other customers, and so far, some of the things we've already asked for, so we'll, we'll try to see what we can do on that.
And then I don't know, also luggage being one of the, the questions asked, and people being like, well, it's too crowded for this many people, because they don't want to hold their bags in their lap. So I was asking if there's a possibility also, possibly adding roof rack to be able to support some of the luggage, too.
Okay.
How about pets? Are pets allowed in there? Okay.
Yeah. I will say that I had some friends visiting the island yesterday, and they were looking at the coast, and when I told them it was Circuit, they were excited, because they already have the Circuit app on their boat, so.
Oh, sweet.
Because they use it on the mainland, yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah, it was good, it was good writing, it was easy.
Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Or, oh, no. Councilmember reports. Oh, City Attorney, thanks, Michael. See, I'm glad you're still on my right. Okay.
Hello, in the closet somewhere in the city of Camrio. I just said, next week I will be attending the Contract Cities Association Conference in Indian Wells with Councilmember De La Rosa.
Excellent, okay.
She's going to be my chaperone. I tend to get proper.
Oh, yeah, you're a wild and crazy guy. Okay. And Councilmember reports?
I, I have nothing to report, but I did want to make a comment on, in regards to something I had spoken about earlier, when I went to Policy Committee meeting, and Edison, Southern California, or PG&E and San Diego Gas and Electric with their new rate structure that they want to put in. I had told Dave there was a good article in the Times, which explained it better than what I had ever seen, but there's even a better article in the Times today that rips it apart.
Oh, sweet.
To where they think that the legislation was rushed, and there are senators and assembly people who are going to try to stop it from happening, because they feel that it's not beneficial to the average customer, which, after reading this article, I tend to agree with. I didn't realize that PG&E was the one that was behind pushing it, and I just don't see for-profit utilities doing things out of the goodness of their heart to take care of us, so. I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, that, yeah.
Attended the Long Beach Unified School Board meeting last month, and was bummed to find out that they only allow for thirty minutes of public comment on non-agenda items, and thirty minutes of public comment on agenda items. And by the time that I got there, forty-five minutes early, the signup list was actually already full. Had a discussion with both the President and Vice President of the Board during a break in the meeting, and had a discussion with Doug Otto at the end of the meeting. That was interesting. And will be attending again next week, and getting there plenty early, probably an hour and a half, to be able to sign up right on time, and also get a seat. They allow for everyone to talk for three minutes for public comment, so on average, they usually get ten to twelve people per section, which I found was interesting, given how many people they serve, but also maybe how many people don't show up to school board meetings. So had a few calls with the Gateway Cities COG this week regarding one of the topics for discussion this evening, so I'll fill you guys in on that when we get to that point. Had the really fun time of attending the Kids at Play show out at the casino, and was a bit disappointed to hear about low attendance numbers. This is, I believe, Kids at Play's second-to-last show ever. It'll be doing one more season for a fall show, and then that'll be, I believe, it, so. Yeah, it's sad to hear and understandable, but it's tough, because people aren't showing up to the shows. And I know that everyone has work on the weekends and has things they have to do on the weekends, but really hoping that in lieu of that, people will be in attendance for, Sean asked me to share this info real quick, so I'm just going to grab it, yeah, for the show at the casino this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. The show is called Play On or Murder Most Vowel. It's a hysterical farce about a community theater group putting on a production, and everything goes horribly wrong. So it'll be at six PM on Friday and Saturday evenings, and at four-thirty matinee on Sunday, Mother's Day. It's fifteen dollars at the door per person. Please, if you want to keep seeing community theater happen, he's dedicated to this right now, to keeping it going, but needs people to show up and, and watch the show and come and enjoy it. And it's a, it's a fun, different thing to do, that doesn't cost a ton of money, that is enjoyable. So hoping that you guys will come out and support some of the community members in the show, and should be a lot of fun. Want to also just wish congrats to the Avalon High School Boys volleyball team. Yesterday was so much fun. They beat their opponent in three games straight, and had lost to their opponent two games straight at the beginning of the season. So to see them improve significantly, this was the semifinals for CIF. They're in the finals. The finals will be at Ontario Christian this Saturday over town at one PM. So again, hoping if you're a former Avalon student or resident, and you're living over town, or you happen to be on the, on the mainland for that, please do show up. It's a ton of fun. I'm sure that the other school will have a lot of support, just because they're over town, and could use the extra voices and cheering. I don't think, it's been a long time since I've seen a team actually get loud and cheer for themselves from the bench and fire up the crowd. It was a good, it was good. And the other team was really getting the taunting going, and we did not fall for it at all, so kudos to the majority of the Avalon fans, who were polite, respectful, and equally cheering, especially, I got to call out Nick Morones, and what I believe was part of the football team that was there to support the volleyball team. It was, it was good. It was good stuff. It was good supportive, positive cheering, which was really great. And then, had a good Avalon Beautiful meeting, had about a dozen people in attendance for that. I want to thank Tina Kennedy for taking on the presidency of Avalon Beautiful. I'm hoping to meet with her in the next week or two, to go over everything and start handing over stuff to the new board. We'll get some stuff out in the paper this coming, not this week, but next week, and get, hopefully, some projects going, and some discussions going around projects that are pending with Avalon Beautiful and other locations. And otherwise, I think that's, that's it for me.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
I was going to ask you, when's the next district meeting?
School district meeting? It's going to be a week from tomorrow, five PM, at the, it's fifteen fifteen Hughes Way. I'll post the stuff, the info tonight, if you'd like me to, or send it to you.
Please.
Yeah.
And if we could, I know this school year is pretty much ending,
Right.
but if we could keep just following up and start working on them possibly coming next, next year.
That's my intent, to go to the meeting to ask that of them this year. And then I let them know that I'll be coming to meetings next year as well. The school board meetings stop in June. I won't, they don't have one the last week of school because of graduations. And I've got COG the first week of June, so if anyone wants to attend that, they're welcome to. But then they'll start back up again. I think they have the first official meeting since September, but I believe there's one at the end of August as well.
It would be nice if you could get a parent to go. It's lovely that we're all concerned.
Yes, agreed. Well, and the, the challenging part, which is why we want to have them host something here, is because it's not just going over for a meeting and coming back. It's the boat and staying overnight, and all the things that go with it. So it's definitely an expense. Yeah.
Absolutely.
I am going over this weekend to support Herlinda Chico. She's going to have a little Mother's Day brunch fundraiser, so I'm doing that this weekend. And then next weekend, I am joining Scott and a lot of the other cities of the usual, Indian Wells, California Contract City Seminar. I did get a phone call this last week that I will be back on the executive board, so I'm very excited.
Congratulations.
This year now, that's crazy. Wow, it just like hit me. That's crazy. But a couple other things, since I wasn't here the last meeting, I did attend a meeting actually with Lance, thank you Lance, with CPUC, and we did some advocating for our community. I think we gave them a better understanding of what our community truly looks and consists of, compared to the numbers they're looking at, like the census. So thank you for letting me join in on that. I did also attend the Resource Fair that was at the Parish Hall, held by the Medical Center. And I just want to say thank you to them and all of the agencies that made it over to the island. It was busy all day. So I also wanted to say how proud I am of our community to go and voice all of the issues they may have, because I know it's hard to be vulnerable, and sometimes it is hard to ask for help. So thank you guys for going and, you know, letting the county know that we do need help, as we always do. But I did also want to give a shout out to the Public Works crew, and as well as Gabby and Glenn, our mortuary and our cemetery department. I unfortunately had another loss recently. My mom's brother passed, and just like with Saul, they were there for us through it all, because, you know, with grief, as it comes, your brain is scattered. So they guide you through everything, and they were just as amazing this time around, so thank you guys. And I did have another meeting that had connected with the Resource Fair. Orale reached out to me, which they're formerly known as the Long Beach Immigration Rights Coalition. They were there for us during COVID. They, I believe it was close to thirty families. They gave them five hundred dollar gift cards, and they helped a lot of families. But they're the ones that reached out to me to kind of do a, a quick debrief of what they got from the Resource Fair. A couple of things that we already knew, but I think that we needed to hear again, that our documented community needs help with. So I think it's something that we have to start being more consistent with and following through with. We had a really good meeting with Dave about it, so we're going to start getting some more work done for them, which makes me very happy and excited, because they deserve it. We all deserve it. Also, Desinko de Mayo, we've been practicing for close to five months. My knees are done for, and my feet were extremely sore, but everything looked beautiful. And huge shout out to Dave and Mr. Hall for, because there was kids everywhere, there was people everywhere, but you guys organized it all, and it looked beautiful. And I'm very excited for the next year already, even though my knees are still hurt. And also, one last thing, I will be helping at the art festival with the Women's Forum, so if you guys want to visit our booth, we will be there all weekend, nine AM to four PM. Thank you, guys.
Okay, well, I have to confess, at the Resource Fair, I drew your name to win a prize, and I said, oh, we don't need to give it to a councilwoman. So I drew another name. So I owe you a basket of something from the hospital. I apologize. Okay. You know, people say there's nothing to do in town. You're absolutely nuts. Hell, this last three weeks have been really busy since the sixteenth, so there was, you know, the Rotary Clothes Drive, the Resource Fair, Chamber Mixer at the Avalon Hotel. Well, and Jocelyn and I were on a Zoom call with Val Finkel, Freddie's fortieth birthday as bartender at the Marlin Club, of course, I wasn't going to miss that, Phil Hernandez's block party, which was insane, Career Day and Job Fair at the school, naming of the new Carnival cruise ship, the Forenza, which was pretty awesome, Dave's fiftieth birthday and college graduation party, the Tamale Festival, weed pulling with Jim, and, well, I didn't go up on the hill, but Jim and Linda Sailor were up on the hill, and I was doing the flower beds for Earth Day. Jocelyn and I met with Supernell, that's like a future vertical aviation vehicle. The Onions were playing, or singing downtown, and the Onions, it's because it's a choir, and, you know, there's many layers to all the voices, so from, from soprano to basso. Went to SCAG, the Regional Transportation Plan was approved, the Outrigger Christine, which has been, was great, Fire Department Open House, then the Rugby Old Man's Tournament. And I think Val was at most of these, unless it was the ones over And I think Val was at most of these, unless it was the ones over town, I couldn't invite her. And we did the first run for the volunteers that are gonna be needing for their friends who are looking for more volunteers. They can contact Jim, they can contact Devon, contact me, Conrado Vega. I think we're gonna have maybe another training on Friday at ten o'clock. And Devon has lined out, you know, there's four different stations, four or five different staging places where we will need assistance from about ten in the morning till four, four-thirty in the afternoon. You don't have to work all day, but anyway, so that's more to come on that. And I also learned, and I don't know Tim's last name at the bank.
Foley.
Foley, but he will be leaving us. Friday is his last day, so you're losing him as a rotarian? Or is he a lion?
I think he's a lion.
Oh, he's a lion, sorry. But anyway, he will be leaving, so if you're gonna do any banking in the next couple of days, he's been here for seven and a half years and we want to thank him for his service to the community. That's it, okay. So oral communications. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to three minutes and no action will be taken.
Mark Task, I live on Clarissa. When I was on the planning commission, we were always told, we'll grant the permit or the rental, whatever. And it's up to those people to make a go of it or not. It's not our responsibility. You as council members and mayor and city manager, you have a, you grant your permit for an item and it's not up to you or the city or anybody else to make sure that they make a go of it. There's been a continual void in civility and lack of abiding by the rules on Vegas electric bikes. I have pictures. Certain people have told me, but there have been letters written. I have, I'll be blunt, I had an altercation with him because I told him, you can't have eight bikes on the street. You're on the street, it's parking that's, you're taking away from people. Well, he blatantly told me, he goes, I have cameras, I don't have the time, and Devon said I could do it. Now, far be it from me to invoke a name of somebody on planning or council without having knowledge or actual backup. So I am asking, better at demanding, that we have a permit revocation hearing and call him on the carpet. He needs you to have his permit lifted or he needs to be on probation with a fine and a continuance of that fine.
I know none of which you speak, but I'm sure they will discuss whatever the incidences are. And since no action will be taken here, they'll be.
No, I realize that. But the problem is that inch, you take a mile. He's taking two golf carts worth of parking up. And it's lower, you know, it's lower sumner. And that is prime parking area.
Oh, that's what you're talking about? Okay.
Yeah, and that, it's wrong. I mean, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jim Lucian from Love Catalina Island. Just wanted to give you a little update on even more things that are happening. Catalina is in the running for USA Today's Ten Best Summer Travel Destinations. Please, everybody here and at home, vote once a day through May thirteenth. As of yesterday, we were in second place, but in the final week of voting, they don't post the daily updates on your ranking. The voting closes on May thirteenth, they'll announce a winner on May twenty-second. We really hope to end up in the top five, but wouldn't number one be amazing? And so spread the word among your friends, family, followers, and guests. And I brought some handouts with a QR code if you have a place or on the dashboard of your golf cart or wherever where you want to put those. So I'll hand that over to you before I leave.
What do you win?
We win a year of getting to say we were the top destination for the year. And that's, that's pretty significant.
And the other thing is, we are the only California city in this nomination.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not that I don't love Jersey City, but we're better than Jersey City.
Yes. Catalina Pride 2024 planning is complete and we are bringing bigger and better acts this year to really ramp up the experience. Unfortunately, the hate, even from within our own community, is pretty rampant this year. So I ask that we all work together to make for a safe and welcoming day of celebration on June fifteenth. Information on the entertainment lineup is posted now on lovecatalina.com/pride. And I'd like to once again thank US Bank for being our title sponsor again this year. The Eighteenth Annual Taste Round of Avalon is slated for Thursday, May thirtieth, followed by Restaurant Week, May thirty-first through June sixth. Bars and restaurants are currently being asked to sign up and media releases are already being distributed. We hope to see some of our new operators join and even be winners this year. On May sixteenth, we will be hosting a mixer at the Hotel Metropole and the Metropole Marketplace. The public is welcome to join us by calling 310-510-1520 or sign up online at lovecatalina.com. Some new and returning directors have recently been accepted on our board on a slate that includes Amanda Bombard, Yoli Say, Grace Olivet Upton, Lisa Beach, and Cindy McGugan-Cassidy. We will soon be saying goodbye and thanking Bryce Noel, Nicole Hoenstein, and Tim Foley, as you mentioned, and Gail Fornesir. In addition, we will be soon welcoming Sheila Bergman, who will fill the seat vacated by Gail, the museum seat, on our board, and that'll begin later this month. Our Board of Directors has recently spent three days in various planning sessions and from that is bringing forward a new policy manual and new bylaws, both of which should lead to more efficient and legally streamlined organization. And I thank you for the time to speak to you.
Anything?
No, but I just wanted to follow up on something that you said, Jim, about Pride. Which started with the hate was a group of citizens who wanted to do a crosswalk in rainbow colors.
Yeah.
I was shocked by the reaction from some of the people in my community and completely shocked by the attitude of people on the mainland. Their attitude is like, you know, you don't like it, you don't need to come here. That, that's how I was feeling. But I would like to request that we do do the sidewalk or the crosswalk. The person who wanted to, who was gonna spearhead it wants to do spray chalk, so it's not permanent. And so I had talked to Dave to see if we could work that out, and I think we can. But I was just surprised by the, I'm not on the discussion page. Somebody just happened to post that piece and it just blew me away, so.
I like the idea of it for the event, but the spray chalk is fine. I think part of what we had looked at with Bob previously about the, I don't know if it was an active transportation plan or part of the streets program, but there were some allowances in that program for decor in the crosswalks. I think it's a great idea to make something permanent.
We did, actually, the very first year of Pride, we discussed doing it either temporarily or permanently. And at that time, we looked at the crosswalk that sort of goes between the vacant bonds and the backside of the post office. I think at that point, if I remember right, the golf cart rental was still there. And so we worried that that was a point of congestion and maybe not where you wanted an Instagram moment, but that might not be the case now, so maybe it's a good location to consider.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other oral communications? Do you have anything, Devon? Okay, then we will have presentations. Matthew Baker, come on down.
Good evening, Council. Matt Baker, Finance Director. This is the second of our budget presentations for the upcoming fiscal year 2024, 2025. The goal of tonight's presentation is to kind of give Council an update on the capital improvement program, some of the major projects that were included in the program this budget year and kind of a year-to-date where we stand on those projects. We thought it made sense to kind of begin here as far as CIP because a lot of the projects, you know, are more than one-year projects where we'll start them in one fiscal year and then continue on for the next several fiscal years. So we thought it'd be a good chance to update Council on what we've accomplished this year as well as kind of preview what some of the projects are gonna be for next year. The goal then is for the next council meeting, there's gonna be a couple of projects that we call out in particular, one being the Five Corners project and the second being the Mole Phase Two. So I'm sure Council has questions on those projects from a budget standpoint. They are very significant projects. You know, it's not, every year we'll have a project that's more than five million budgeted for CIP. In fact, in my time at the city, we've had one project across that dollar amount. And the next fiscal year, we'll have two projects that we really expect to begin construction with amounts in excess of five million. So those two projects will be discussed at the next meeting as well as any kind of new projects added to the CIP book. That being said, if there are projects Council would like to bring to staff's attention, tonight's a great night to start that conversation. And then lastly, the last meeting, we did talk about the operating budgets. Dave and I are still working with the department heads as we're going through budgets. But if Council does have any questions on what was presented, we can either discuss them here or at the next council meeting or the meeting, first meeting in June. I just wanted to put it out there that we are still kind of massaging those numbers, but they do look more or less kind of what we presented. I think gives a good general picture of what our plan for next year looks like.
Okay.
Then, just real quick, just so we're all on the same page. What is CIP? So that is our Capital Improvement Plan, which contains all of our major projects as well as any major equipment purchases. And we also try to capture some studies and things of that nature, so larger kind of one-time expenditures. So really, there's two components within the CIP plan. There's the budget, and that's the spend that we have in the current fiscal year. And then as we're discussing the next year's budget, that's gonna be presented to Council. The capital budget is the monies planned for next fiscal year to be spent. And then there's the program itself, which identifies all projects that are kind of on city's radar, so that's the capital program. So we won't necessarily have any spend on a project, but it's important that we have the project captured in our CIP. That way, as grants become available, depending on the dollar amount of the project, we can start setting monies aside. And so it's important that we identify the projects and include them in the book, even if we know that it's not something for the next year or five years or even ten years out. But that way, we can start planning for it and saving for it and things like that. So real quick, it's slightly different from my other presentations. I've got a number of pictures in this one, so I hope everyone watching can appreciate. The picture on the far left, that is Joe Machado Field, and that's the new benches that went in this fiscal year. So we had a number of park improvements in the budget for this current year. We had a hundred and ninety thousand budgeted. And it was really phased over several different projects. Some of them we were able to accomplish, but some of them, due to timing, will roll into the next budget year. But we were able to finish out the benches area. Right in the middle is the new ambulance that's coming to the island next week. And then we've also made some improvements on the Bonita Way stairs. And so that's what that picture is on the far right. So here's a breakdown of our projects that were in our capital budget this current fiscal year. So kind of working down the list, we had six hundred and ninety thousand in vehicle replacement for fire. We never planned to fully spend that six ninety, but this is how we build up a reserve so that we can make some major replacements of some of the large vehicles they have in the department. We have spent two hundred and forty-four thousand to date. And again, that was the wire we sent last week for the purchase of that ambulance. You can see self-contained breathing apparatus. We had two hundred thousand in the budget. That likely will be in the budget again next year, but for four hundred thousand. So we're trying to kind of plan over a multi-year period for that major expenditure. And we are pursuing grants for that, but we're also kind of running up against a clock in that there's an expiration date on our existing SCBA's. And so we're still hopeful we could be successful with the grant, but if we're not, we still need to replace those next fiscal year. Some of the other projects we had in the budget this year are some fire station improvements or upgrades for twenty-seven thousand five hundred workforce housing. And so that's a lot of the kind of preliminary design engineering for a hundred thousand. You can see we've spent a hundred and two thousand and a hundred and ten is kind of where I have right now estimated for the year. Our budget policy allows for projects that are over multi-years for us to pull money from the next year. And so it's something to pay attention on the budget. So if we budget a project a hundred thousand this year and a hundred thousand for next year, it's because we expect to only spend the hundred thousand this year. But we don't want to stop a project based on that number. And so amounts under a hundred thousand, we have the ability to pull from future years in the CIP plan. And so that's something important. Anything over a hundred thousand or from a different project, we'd have to go to Council. But we do have that ability. So you might see some that are slightly over budget and we'll be providing Council with kind of a full update on the amendments to pull those forward. You can see the Per Capita Grants Project. We had a hundred and ninety thousand in the budget and eighty-two thousand spent year-to-date. The remainder of that is, I think, largely the shade structure improvements, which will likely happen after the peak visitor season next year. And so that's another project you'll see in the budget next year. Joe Machado Field improvements, that really is the debt repayment right there. So I'm happy to report this year, we made the last payment, which means we need to start setting monies aside for, you know, additional field improvements because the fields that Dave tells me won't last forever. And so we need to start putting monies aside to make sure we maintain that facility. Casino Dive Point Dive Park, we had in the budget this current fiscal year, monies for restrooms. We haven't spent anything on that. And we can discuss at a later date, at a later meeting, kind of what our plans are for those restrooms. But we don't expect any spend between now and the end of the fiscal year for that project. Crescent Avenue Stairs, I have a slide later in this presentation and Bob will be able to speak to it in more detail, but we have some exciting updates on that. And you can see, we have four hundred thousand in the budget this current year and we do expect to spend that amount this year. And that's what that update Bob will give, will provide that info. Annual Traffic Transportation Improvements. Again, these are the study we did related to the elbow, which is what we kind of refer to, that intersection by the trailhead and the golf cart rentals on the corner of Front Street. And so it's those types of monies in the budget that allow us to do those types of studies that later lead to additional potential capital projects. The Bonita Way Stairs, we're doing some of that repairs with using our own crews, so we don't have a whole lot of spend year-to-date. But that is a project that will likely roll into the next budget year with additional monies in the next fiscal year for that.
Just a quick question, I'm sorry, because when you switched, did we lose the maintenance yard?
I apologize if I skipped one.
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay.
So the maintenance yard upgrades, and so that is a project where we're looking at the existing structure we have up at the warehouse. And ideally, what we'd like to be able to do is combine our garage space with the rest of the Public Works Warehouse to where we have them into one facility. And then just better utilize that facility, so we'd have more room in theory for storage and workspace. I don't know if you've seen that structure, but I try not to spend too much time in it. And there's some cost savings too, because we do rent the second location. And so potentially, if we were able to combine the two locations, we could help offset some of the costs of that project through that rent savings. Let's see, Burma Trail Retaining Wall. I believe the goal with that project is to tie it to some of the retaining wall work we need to do at 206 East Whitley near that, because there's a lot of specialized equipment that's involved with that. And again, Bob can speak to it better than I can. But, you know, one of the challenges with all the capital projects, and this is kind of what still I But, you know, one of the challenges with all the capital projects, and this is kind of what still I, you know, six years in, still have a hard time believing, is how much it costs just to get the equipment out and to rent the equipment. And so anytime we can kind of pair projects together, even if it means it it takes a little longer for a project to to start, it definitely can save considerable amount of money if we're able to do that. So moving down, we have the City Hall remodel. And so that's really the the office phase piece. We'll likely be coming with the next budget some additional monies to improve the flooring within kind of the the main chambers, as well as make some improvements to the the council chambers in addition to the AV improvements that are already in the budget. Five Corners, I I already kind of hinted at it. We're going to be talking about that in more detail at the next council meeting. We are excited that we did get that additional grant funding. And so we're really expecting to begin construction in the upcoming fiscal year. And at the next meeting, we'll really go over kind of in more detailed timeline what that really means. Because I know I've I said that this year, we're going to start construction, and I probably said it the year before. But it's it's really exciting. The the one benefit of kind of this delay is we were able to identify some additional funding, and and it makes it a whole lot easier to do the project with this grant. And so it, I I know we've been talking about this project as long as I've been at the city. But, you know, it the the delay in this case really is going to pay off because of that additional funding we were able to get. The Pebley Beach Road Rip Wrap, we received $2 million last year, I believe, around this time from a federal earmark, I believe with the FTA. And that's going to be for kind of major improvements along Pebley Beach Road. That's another project we do expect to break ground next fiscal year. And you'll see that project again in next year's budget. And then lastly on there, I'll skip over storm grain improvements. Lastly on there is the cemetery improvements, and that mainly was for the purchase of a new, I believe it's called a niche. It's it's the wall where where remains are stored. And so we do expect that, and that if not in this meeting, I think it's going to be coming to council in a s- a meeting coming up for the purchase of that.
That's the one that's on the left as you go into the cemetery?
I.
Pretty much that one over by Fairview?
I believe it's a new.
It's one like that, yes.
I believe it's a new one like that.
It's a new one.
So.
That one's a mess, but I guess the guys have been planned a bit. But that's lovely.
And so this is the Crescent Avenue stairs, and that is a spider crane. And so I think we're all excited to see what this can do. I have Bob here, and Bob's going to talk a little more about what the spider crane is and kind of what the plan is for the hillside. And a lot of this is going to be coming up real soon, so.
Yeah, Bob Greenlaw. Really excited to report that we finally got a contractor. This contractor is well-qualified, does some very unique work, you know, because this is a very tight access type project, either from the roadway, being very high up, and then trying to get either materials or equipment up there or coming up the access to the stairway. So approximately less than two weeks ago, we got contact from that this contractor was available. They were coming off a project just over town here in Hollywood and said that they were available and that they would be a good fit. That was recommended by our our geotechnical engineer, because I had put out all her feelers that I need somebody. We've been waiting for years here, and we've been trying to negotiate. And you had given us the authority to negotiate a contractor for three, for $300,000. So once we talked to him, it seemed like a very good fit, and he gave us a proposal for under that 300,000 for, you know, the labor involved in it. We do have $400,000 allocated in the budget right now. We think that the costs were, you know, we're going to get up to somewhere around 550. That's what we're going to ask, we're going to try to keep those costs down below that. It's pretty dynamic at this moment, but we are trying to contain those costs and get the job done within this next five weeks. So he's onsite right now with a crew of four. The, we've been trying to get this piece of equipment over here. This all reduces down to about the size of a a big lawnmower, and it gets into like a landscape trailer that's pulled with a service truck, and then it'll get delivered here. Now, we are anticipating it being here tomorrow, but because of barge schedules and everything else, the logistics getting the island, we think it's going to be here Friday. And then as we have Friday, we're working with, you know, our partners at the quarry, because they have a crane that can get it up to the top. They get this, you know, it's about 7,000 pounds, put it up the top. It will find its way back up there. It'll be cabled up to the wall, and it can peg leg its way up there. And they've got a guy that sits in that and operates this. So, you know, they say it's about, when you're in that chair, about the size of a lawn chair, and you're in there and you're manipulating up the hill, and it does work. You'll see, we got it shown as a crane here, but the attachments, it really comes down and it's an excavator. And so they can excavate in the hill, they can put attachments on it, they will actually drill the tieback rods into the wall. We're going to put 40-foot tieback walls, 17 of them into the wall there, so that stabilizes that wall. We'll clean up the whole hillside from that sloughed material and bring it down to the road, so you're not going to have that conveyor during the wet times dumping, you know, that material in front of the yacht club. So it does all those things at once, and that's that's for that price they're giving us. And the other unique thing about this contractor is that they're a rockfall specialist. And so we've been asking, what do we do on Pebley Beach Road? That's what they do. And so that I've asked them why they're out here to get up on that hill and give, and with our geotech, give us, you know, a fresh look at that so that we can get something that we can afford and we can target certain areas, because that's their specialty, you know? And so I think we found a contractor here. Hopefully, we can keep him engaged, multiple projects over the years, and keep on calling him back, you know, because he's a young, young guy with a young crew, and they're gung ho, so. Good news. So some of the impacts from that, you're going to have, as we come in Monday, we're probably going to, hopefully, it'll be early before any of us get up. We're going to actually take the crane and lift them up there. And that would be for about an hour or two in the road. So St. Catherine's Way gets closed down when that's happened, because we've got a 20-foot wide set of outriggers on the crane to lift them up. But hopefully, that's before anybody wakes up and realizing that day, what else happens? We got a 5,000-passenger cruise ship, all this stuff comes together. So, and then we'll end up putting that protective K-rail barrier, we'll move that out in the road. So I think what you're going to see is, like we did at Via Casino, you're going to see that stop control at each end of that for a period of three, four weeks. So we're going to have to put up with that, but that's going to protect somebody in case rockfall comes down, we're up there at the top, you know? So, you know, there's some impacts, but we're going to get over it, and this thing's going to be done finally, you know?
Excellent.
Okay?
Thanks, thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to have, bring him out for a few more projects and a couple of slides. It's kind of the next on the list. These are our special revenue fund projects. So you can see we had citywide street rehabilitation, 350,000, and that was going to be a street paving project. And that's one we're going to be rolling into next year's budget with some additional monies likely asked with it, so we can, you know, instead of phasing it over multiple years, try to get more of it accomplished in a shorter amount of time. You can see we don't have any spend this year, but that's another project that's going to be likely rolled forward into next year's budget. The next one on the list is the Community ADA Ramp Projects Phase Two. So with that, we were able to do eight, I believe, curb cuts, as well as some, forgetting the term, but some drainage ditches as well with. Crosscutters, there you go. And then you can see we do have some spend on the the housing project, and we'll at the next meeting go into more detail as to kind of what what that project looks like for next fiscal year. So again, just to kind of highlight some of the changes around town, you can see the various intersections we were able to accomplish. This was all with our CDBG annual allocation. The city gets between 25 and 30,000 a year from CDBG funds. And you can see these intersections, this project was a $200,000 project. So it does take quite a few years of saving up these funds in order to, you know, really make the best use of the contractor's time. But we were able, we're very happy with what we're able to accomplish this year. A couple of them I didn't have pictures for, so there's, I think, two missing from there. So the next up would be the the 24 capital budget for the harbor. You can see the the vehicle replacement, and that largely was for the replacement of engines. And if you look at the actual CIP detail page, for the vehicle replacements in the harbor, we kind of separate holes out from engines. So the, depending on the the type of engine, if it's an outboard versus a diesel, it can be anywhere from three to six-year life. And it's all based on the the hours that that engine gets. And then the holes themselves can be anywhere from six to 10-plus years for the holes. So the next project down on the list is Crescent Street, Front Street Electrical. And so this is kind of a a front street improvements, if you will, project. We don't have any spend this year, but this is another project that's going to be coming back next year, likely with additional monies, kind of right now in conversations. We're looking at 150,000 as the ask for front street improvements. And so this would cover everything from stage improvements at Wrigley Stage as far as electrical to tree lighting, to to things of that nature on Front Street. Float rehabilitation, so this is the float we were able to repair this year, which is float four. You can see we had 97,000 in the budget after the amendment, and the the total came in 95. We, next year, are looking to ask for monies to rehab floats one and two. And this is kind of on a a cycle now with all these floats. So every three to four years, you know, we can pull these floats out and give them a major overhaul, and that'll really kind of extend their their useful life. And so this year, we did float four, last year, we did float five, and then next year, we're looking at floats one and two. And so you can kind of see a pattern, it'll be one, two, three, four, five, all the way through. And then we did have some monies for a potential float six, and that's really monies for a a design. We don't have any spend this year, but likely we'll be including some monies for that, so we can look to put potentially an additional float to maybe take away some of the traffic that's created by the kayaks or some of the other boats out there. The the challenge is finding where to put it. And so hopefully, with that 10,000, we can do some studies to figure out if there is room for a a six float, and if so, where best to to place it. The next project down on the list was Club Dock Dinghy Dock Floats. We had 10,000, and really the goal with there is to eventually replace all the floats. We kind of held off on that because we were applying for a grant that we did get awarded this year, and that's for the replacement of the Club Dock and Dinghy Dock pier. So that will be the same project, but a new dollar amount ask in next year's budget. So again, that grant was a $500,000 grant, 300,000 of it coming from the granting agency, and I believe 200,000 as a local match. But that, what that would buy us is a completely new pier there, as well as new floats all around the that Club Dock. Green Pier Repairs, if you remember, last year, we did an emergency repair of five pilings. We had in the budget 450,000 for additional piling repairs and 515,000 for additional decking repairs. The 50,000 spent to date was really on permitting engineering for those additional piers, and we're going to be likely rolling forward this into next year's budget ask. And so we're still trying to figure out whether it makes sense to do the the, all the pilings first or the decking with the pilings. But likely, this project is going to be one where it's rolled forward into next year's budget. South Beach Seawall, that's really just engineering. And there there likely will be at the next meeting a bigger ask as far as kind of the next stages of that project. Float ramps, this is kind of an annual to improve some of the the float ramps. Orin and I worked last year within the CIP book to kind of come up with a schedule. And so this really is kind of designed to replace a ramp each year with the goal of keeping them on a cycle, similar to what we were talking about with the floats, where, you know, every 10 years, I believe, a ramp, kind of that's its useful life, so we can start setting monies to to replace them as as a, on a more routine schedule. So the Harbor Master Roofing, that's another project that's going to roll forward into next budget year. It's definitely needed, we just kind of ran out of time on that project this year. Harbor Security Camera, our anchor chains is another one. That's kind of an annual amount we want to set aside so we can build up funding to replace kind of the major chains that that hold the the structures in. Security cameras, I right now don't have any planned spend this year, but talking to Orin, Orin met with Pat, so that might be something in a couple of weeks. We can positively report back a different amount, but we are looking at improving the the security cameras in the harbor.
I know it's it's harbor, but are we still looking into doing that just for citywide as well, improving security cameras? Yeah.
We are looking at that. I mean, working, talking to Sheriff's Department, I mean, that's just something we have to figure out and have to get done, yes.
So the the next one on there, and you can see from a dollar amount, it's it's by far the biggest, is that Cabrera Mole Phase Two. Like I said, at the next meeting, we'll be spending more time talking about this project in particular. Casino Way Improvements, this is another one. Last year, this is where we had the major repairs made to the Casino Way Arch. And so kind of when we're talking Casino Way improvements, you can think the arch to the fuel dock. And so that's another one where we don't have any planned spend this year, but what we're going to be doing is rolling forward that amount and likely in next year's budget, asking for additional monies to go to some improvements along that Casino Way. And then Fuel Dock Rehabilitation, this was looking at the the dock itself to see if there's any structural enhancements we could make to that facility. And then the big one on this year is the Underground Fuel Tank. You can see we had spent in the prior year 50,000 or so on that project with close to 700,000 in the budget this year. Year to date, we have spent 737,000, and and we're going to be coming to council with the budget amendment as we, when it's all said and done, this project will be over a million. We have been going to council in the staff reports, and this is something we can probably improve on with the budget amount and the dollar amount request, but we really haven't put them together in one, so you can see kind of the total cost. And so that's something we can improve as as a staff. But we are happy with the the progress we've made with this project. And so again, this project is partially grant-funded. It was an estate budget earmark that our former Assembly member, Patrick O'Donnell, was successful in getting for us. And so the initial project estimated cost was 750,000, and it was first identified in our fiscal year 20 budget. Again, that was the the COVID-impacted fiscal year 20. And so the project had an estimated cost of 750,000, 475,000 in grant funding with the remainder of our local match. So you can see kind of from a timeline of of where we've been, in March, we came to council asking to solicit bids for a tank for a not-to-exceed amount of 200,000. We awarded that in June of last year to Western Pump for 160. Then we went out kind of for bids for the construction of the foundation, the retaining wall and and the related kind of infrastructure there, and awarded that to Jordal for 274,000. We also then went to RFP for the tank itself, the tank installation, and awarded that to Jordal. Then most recently, we went to issue an RFP for the remediation of the old tank and awarded that to Wayne Perry. And so you can see that's brings us to close to today, and this project really needs to be completed by June 30th. And I believe it's on track to to definitely be completed by then. But again, if you have any questions on this project, Bob, I'm sure can speak to it better than I can.
Well, because they've got the top on the building even, and how they matched it with the other one. I mean, it's just a comment, it looks like that's all done as well. I saw the guys out there building it, you know, the.
Yeah, so the Art Deco?
Yes.
Yeah, so that that's, we wanted to blend it in, we, you know. So you, it's really kind of an accessory buildings kind of look, so you don't want to take anything away from the casino, but you want to start building that Art Deco. And so we went out there, so if we can make that kind of the sister building to what the cave is, right next to it, have the same color match, and then all of a sudden, bam, you come into the casino there. So it doesn't take away, but it kind of blends everything. All the coloring is going to be the same as the Serpentine Wall. We've still got to select the color for the green, that's the top Art Deco, so we still, that's why that's not painted. There's going to be a grading on the roofing, so you're going to see all that kind of hidden, what's in there, but you see the tank now. So it'll be a very tight grading, but it'll still allow some airflow in there. And there's going to be a artistic set of screening around the the boxes, the filled boxes, which are stainless steel now, because those are a requirement of air quality that they had to, instead of putting like a gravity fill box, which is in the ground, we had to put those. So now we're going to put some artistic piece, which is going to enclose that, so you, it won't stand out as much, okay? Otherwise, the project. Otherwise, the project, we're going to remove, we're going to clean out the tanks tomorrow. They're already excavated, clean out the tanks tomorrow. By this week, we should have the tanks out and out of the ground, and then they'll be disposed of. They'll be cleaned, though, tomorrow. So there's a piece of equipment that will be right next to the casino building, so it's going to be a little bit tight there for access while they're cleaning it tomorrow. So they, just alerting everybody on that. But otherwise, our major significant change orders on this was, there was a lot of underground stuff that we couldn't move that side of that tank. We were pretty well locked in. Once we found those impacts, even though we explored all that, they were significant impacts, so they, it was costly. And then being in the middle of the AR events, we had to get there and shore up all of the roadway. So all of those two things add cost to the project. But I think the community has an excellent fifty-year-plus life of substantial improvement.
Yeah, excellent, excellent. So that would be a lovely wall for some community art project.
It's a fresh palette for you.
Yeah. We don't have to keep by numbers, and we'll come up with something, but when we talk further about community art, that would be a lovely place to do something. Great, thanks, Bob.
So next up would be our capital projects for our other enterprise funds, and so that would be our, our sewer, saltwater, solid waste, our transit program, as well as our internal service fund, so the, the garage. So you can see, I'm going to combine the two, first two projects there. They're kind of our annual sewer improvements, our major sewer improvements. And this is an area where we can build out our CIP. The sewer has its own ten-year CIP plan, but we haven't kind of integrated it into our budget CIP document. And so you can see, we did have in the budget one-point-three-million in sewer projects, and year-to-date, we've spent five-hundred-and-seventy-four. And I have a slide later on this that kind of goes over what, what that five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand bought us. Annual saltwater improvements, we had three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in the budget and thirty-one spent to date. Landfill closure, and this is really just as, as a place to track it. I don't know if it really falls within the, the CIP itself, but it's, it's a good example of, we need to set monies aside every year in order to fund the closure costs for the landfill. And so we will set aside two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand this year for that purpose. Again, we also have a, another project in the landfill looking at a retaining wall. Again, the benefit of this retaining wall would be it would expand the height of the landfill, which would then extend the useful life of the landfill. And so there's, there's some promising updates. And so at the next meeting, I think we probably will be able to share with council where kind of we're at with that project as well. Next on the list is our information systems. We haven't spent a whole lot to date, but most of that is going towards the AV upgrades. And so as I reported earlier, the two weeks in June, we will have contractors onsite making those improvements to the chambers here. So hopefully, the, the viewing experience at home will be improved after we're able to do that. Then lastly on the list is the dialer ride vans and the microtransit system. And I have a slide that goes over kind of the timeline of these in more detail. But again, we were able to, to purchase a lot of those pieces of equipment, the, the green gems you see driving around, as well as the two dialer ride vans, because we got some one-time funding that had to be used for transit purposes. And so, you know, it, it's really, we're fortunate that we're able to get that money and kind of use that for, I think, building a really cool product. And then lastly, vehicle replacement in the public works. If you've noticed, we've improved some of the vehicles in the fleet. And again, we're trying to get them similar to the fire department, similar to the harbor, where we have a kind of money set aside each year, so we can kind of maintain that fleet to a, to a better standard.
Where are those pickup trucks going to run?
That'd be a question for Jamie, I think.
We have, we have one in the next two weeks, and then the other two are coming sometime in June.
Okay, great.
So again, for the, the sewer and wastewater treatment, and again, Bob can speak to this or Jackie better than I could, but we've brought a number of projects forward to council related to this. Earlier in the year, we brought to council for the purchase of a backup generator. We also then went out and purchased a new screw press. Then there were additional improvements, and I'm, I'm going to hand this over to Bob if you have any questions on, on the sewer, because...
No, we're good. We're really good.
Okay.
We're just fine.
Okay.
Did you put the timer on this guy?
I've, I've only got two...
How we doing?
He, he's at thirty-five minutes, four seconds.
Okay. Good to hear that.
Always bet the over. We only got two slides left, Annie. So again, seaside transit, we got the list here then of kind of the, the, the process of getting the transit program to where it was. It all started because last fiscal year, we got ARPA Act equivalent Prop A incentive program funds, and we were able to use those funds. We had to use them for transit purposes, and so we elected to use them to purchase those new fleet of gem vehicles, as well as charging infrastructure for those vehicles. We also applied for a grant with LTSS for our dialer ride vans, and that's how we were able to also purchase those two new white vans that are in service. And then the rest kind of outlines the timeline of, of, you know, actions brought to council this fiscal year to get our new transit program up and running. So lastly, this last slide, just for the next meeting, our plan is to bring forward kind of detailed information on the Five Corners project, detailed information on the Mole Phase Two, as well as a, a list of kind of new projects that weren't discussed here and weren't in the, the CIP plan for this year, but are new for fiscal year twenty-five, as well as if there are other projects that council would like to make sure are seen in the budget, whether that's for spend next year or just in the program, so they're on our radar, so we can pursue grant funding for them and, and the like. So I guess with that, if there are any questions?
Do you have any projects?
Go ahead.
I got some projects. So thank you, Bob, especially for mentioning the potential for project work on Pebbley Beach Road with the spider crane. That's one that I think we've talked about for a number of years and wanting to improve. And I'm wondering if the possibility of going after funds for preventative maintenance through FEMA would be one of the best ways to do that, to be able to secure funding to show that we won't have to ask them for funding after events in the future potentially? If that can cause a lot of that slide to stop falling, we may save money in the future and not have to apply for those funds. I'm encouraged by the traffic study and the engineers that have been out here for the elbow, and I'm excited to hear about that in a second, but wanted just to see about the general traffic study and parking that we've talked about previously, wanting to have in the budget, and looking at that as a possibility. We also have an item on the agenda tonight for the, um, uh, funding source to help with the offset for matching funds for broadband. If one of these next two funding opportunities doesn't go through, I'd like us to go ahead and put an engineering study together to study the current state of broadband and cellular on the island, what the capacity is versus what the need is, and look at how we can manage that. And something that Scott had mentioned also was the idea of comparing cellular fiber, microwave, and also satellite. And so if we could include those four categories in that, that would be great. The Dive Park Emergency Pole, who owns and operates that? Is that us, or is that island company?
Better for sure.
The blue, the blue pole that doesn't work right now. Thanks, Orin.
I don't know if I know the whole history, but I believe it was funded by a grant, and between the fire department and the harbor department, it was maintained. However, it filled up with water with all the rains, and then, and so the equipment's bad. And my feeling is in, on, we used to receive a lot of crank calls on that thing where people were, would hit it, and then we would send a response out there. And then a lot of times, we would report that response back to the fire department, because, like I said, it was a lot of misinformation coming.
Yeah. Well, so I'm actually wondering if we should be removing it, because it doesn't work removing it.
I think we're probably coming into some consensus about removing it.
Yeah.
Because it's antiquated at this point.
Right. It's antiquated because most people have cell phone access.
Here you go, chief.
Right.
Thanks, Orin.
That gets brought up every once in a while, and the push for that, but that was before, cell phones now, but now all the phone lines are going down.
Right.
So that, and then the people keep pushing for an AED out there, but I do not want to put AED out there with the way the kids are nowadays. And it, we, if the harbor and us aren't there within a few minutes, something's definitely wrong. We will be there, we've got twenty-eight EDs and all the apparatus. So one of us will be there with one, and that's not the most important thing.
Well, and it may make sense, we were talking about putting kits at certain locations or in vehicles for emergency response for, for Stop the Bleed, when we had that program here. Maybe it makes sense to partner with the entities that are open out there, the, um, the dive shop and/or the fuel dock, to have some of those, in those places where it's monitored, but it's quickly available if needed for the area. But wondering if we should put into the budget to remove that, to take away the sense of people thinking either it's working and then finding it's not and delaying in time to reach out to you guys on the phone instead, but to also see what we can do just to improve general safety out there. I know you guys respond quickly to calls out there all the time, so it's not an issue of that. But I just, I think it gives a false sense of security when it's not working, people are upset about it, so.
Yeah, we can make arrangements to get that removed.
Yeah, thank you. And then, wanted to see if we could start putting in a budget allocation for this E-level rise project. Just, I know we went through the study a couple of years ago to get that information, and I'm not sure, I can't recall if we have it as a listed item currently for that, but I know there were grant funds possibly out there too, so. And then, on the Dive Park side of the world, one of the suggestions or questions had been to be able to provide more access out there. So looking at the possibility of funding a ramp for the Dive Park to have access into the water, or at least along the shore, that would offer accessible ramp level, easy-to-use access, or even potentially a second stairway into the Dive Park area, to look at those options for funding or grant sources.
Were we going to also try to do that for the Front Street beaches?
We talked about having ramp access by the pier possibly, and I know with the piling project, that's kind of maybe a thing down the road we can do. So I know it had been looked at before, but I don't know how far it got in engineering and design. But that was also, yes, something we wanted to do was to provide a level of access into the water.
You're talking for handicap accessibility?
Yeah, to have rampway access.
Because we had that, we had, is it still up in the warehouse, that?
The wheelchair.
Yeah, that Dan Hickey got?
Yeah.
But I don't think that ended up working right, because it had to be able to get down.
Down the, down the steps, yeah. And I think that's the part that we wanted to solve, was having, whether it's a rampway that runs along the shoreline to be able to provide access, but it's long enough that it can safely do that and not be too steep. Because if you're trying to go straight in, it's going to be too steep to be accessible in terms of wheelchair-approved angles. Yeah. And I, I think that's what I had for now, thank you.
We're good? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Matt, good job, once again. Uh-oh, here comes, uh-oh.
Yeah, we have to be short anyway. I'm, I'm heading over town, because tomorrow, I'm heading up north with our team to look at the workforce housing and modular build factory on that, so.
Nice.
And then hopefully, we'll be in front of you soon to talk about the feasibility of that, so. We're making great progress on that. Okay, so, um, tonight, I'm here to present what we refer to as the Pebbley Beach Elbow Project. It's located at the Sharp Angle or Elbow of the intersection of Crescent Avenue and Pebbley Beach Road. It was recognized as a priority project in the city's recently adopted Active Transportation Plan, or as we refer to it, the ATP. So it's a priority project, as I said. Community feedback, highlight concerns about pedestrian safety in this area, which is the gateway to downtown core and the heart of Avalon. Pedestrian volumes are high here, and there's every mode of travel that you could possibly be, all comes together at this one point. And because the sidewalks are narrow, people often walk in the roadway. This is a common practice all over in Avalon, but when you put all these modes together, we need to separate those up into safe spaces, and that's really what the essence of a complete street project is and the elements of an active transportation project. So the improvements that we're talking about, ultimately, that we're testing out, will improve, support the traffic calming, so we want to slow, you know, the, the progression of the vehicles down. And then it will improve the multimodal use of that by having spaces that are safe for everybody to operate, having their own space, and make it so that it makes sense, so you know where to go just by the use of it. So we're going to create really a shared space that prioritizes people walking and biking, and that's really the ATP part of this. Here on the right side is a whole list of the modifications that we're considering, and I'll go over these in detail now. So the proposal is to implement six traffic calming elements to streamline pedestrian access, improve public safety, and reduce congestion through this critical access point, especially as having that angle, and then having those uses like the golf cart rental, where people are not very familiar with how to even drive a golf cart, and there are visitors on the island, having the trailhead there, and then having the pedestrian mall find its way right from the boat into this intersection, everybody looking for these services. And so we propose for at least a six-week trial period, once we roll these things out, and that's to collect data and to receive public input. And so why do we do a demo? We want to receive that input and make adjustments, so that we can see the proof of concept that it works before we implement.
Good night, Val.
Yeah, we don't want to go build some concrete hard improvements and then have the thing fail on us, okay? So the data input can also be used to adjust the elements and to build the narrative for what is to be in the mid-June, the Cycle Seven ATP grant application. That's where we just received that three-point-two-million for the Cycle Six. So I think we, if we're on a roll right now, if we can get another grant to build this one, it would be in like future years, maybe a year or two down the road, but it could give us that boost, if, depending how robust we want this project to get, because it can be phased in. Okay, so the project elements, we're going to, and this is, right now, is just very high-level graphical, and, and what I'm trying to do is describe the interim improvements we're going to put in. You'll see it spanned out in more detail with engineering as we report back in about six weeks of what we found. So I'll span the crosswalk area at the intersection of Clarissa Avenue and Crescent. So what our engineering team came up with, you know, and you see that orange there, but what, if you've ever been in some crosswalks, and we call them a scramble, when all the lights turn red and, and then it allows all the pads, we essentially want to do this, but we want to try a triangle approach of the crosswalk, so it's going to splay out as it comes to Front Street, but it's going to pinch back to get back to that one crosswalk along the storefronts there. We're going to expand the crosswalk, okay, this is, in number B here, you see this, this builds upon itself. Expand the sidewalk to allow better, better pedestrian access. So along the storefronts, if you look at the dots in the field right now, I've painted dots where we're going to put like a cordoned-off area. And so they're going to, we're going to widen that sidewalk, say, from island threads on down to the golf cart rail, two feet wider. And so we're going to put a set of, and we're going to build temporarily a little wooden deck that you'd be walking on at that same surface level, so we're not pinching you in the road and not get a real look at this thing. So there will be a barrier, a basically a belt barrier along that whole edge, so you can't cross the road, and there'll be that elevation change there. Okay, that's where that green line is along that one side.
But then that still allows for two-way traffic?
Yes, we have a twenty-seven-foot-wide roadway.
Really?
Yeah, that was set, we made, that's, so all modes have to be able to pass, it's proof of concept. I got to talk to the fire chief, and he's, I've got to make it so it works for him. I've got to be able to get the largest truck that we would be able to get through here and prove that concept, we have software that allows us to show the turning movements on that. Ultimately, I think what it will be, as we expand that sidewalk, you're going to see the Serpentine Wall in that area also move. So we'll relocate that a little bit wider. So it pinches out maybe a couple feet on the beach there, but you move all of that, so you make sure that that, what do you gain out of that? You gain wider sidewalks, you don't lose any sidewalk on that. You lose a little bit of beach sand on there, but we repurpose that, you know, where the kayaks are right now. You get all that same pedestrian space, but you just get better passive travel for everybody. Okay, and then we're going to eliminate the parking spaces, so you basically see the big X, so we're going to try that, and we'll see how the, how that's taken. But that will all be, again, we're going to put a flat deck in there, so you're going to see wooden deck, wooden plywood that will allow us to... deck, wooden plywood that'll allow us to, uh, to simulate what that would look like. Okay, and so just imagine that, how that arc of the road there, the elbow is there, that we are taking that arc and putting a consistent 27-foot wide path all the way there for two lanes of traffic. And so, if you look at the way the pedestrians are moving right now, they're moving, they wanna move on that sidewalk kinda outside where the curb line is, and they wanna walk in front of the circle, uh, where the planner is, in front of the trailhead, and they wanna complete that. And so, that's all we're doing naturally, is put this in there, put some barricades so that we kinda keep everybody in the right path, and they go on that path that they've been cutting through, just like a dirt path in a field, that they cut through, cut through traffic, you know, and so if we do that, we think that we're already gonna be successful, because this is the way that people actually wanna naturally use it.
So, just a quick question, I'm sorry, this is offline, but on the, on the trailhead side, from the golf cart rental place, the Whittakers, and you're going, cause there's a lot of people that walk there, and there's those shops there?
Yes.
So, they'll walk there, they'll walk down past?
And then, let me go to the next slide here.
And then they're gonna stay?
Okay, there's gonna be a crosswalk at the apex of that, and then, ultimately, we could open up the pedestrian mall, when you look down, that, you're coming from the ferry, and you go, what do you do? You run into a palapa, and you go, where do I wanna go? I wanna go across the street. And so, when we build, uh, improvements that everybody can see, that we can make good decisions, if we can't see each other, we, they won't even have a chance to make a good decision. That's why this area was selected, number one, is cause where people wanna go, they wanna go to that other side of the street. So, we're giving them three opportunities, we're giving them at Clarissa and Crescent, we're giving them right there at the apex, because if you're at, uh, Clarissa, you can see that apex, if you're at the trailhead, you can see that apex, okay? And then we also have a crossing right at the existing one, the trailhead. Everything else has, is cordoned off, and even that area around the trailhead, that's all gonna be, uh, potentially raised, that's all people area for waiting for golf carts, for the, using the trailhead, for waiting for the Pancake Cottage. And so, um, that will all be like elevated with pavers, but we still gotta consider what the trailhead's needs are, and so we're taking the existing wa- area that's a taxi loading zone, it, it won't go through, you won't be able to drive through anymore, the golf cart rentals won't be able to drive through around the backside of that circle, they'll have to go down Lower Terrace. So, Lower Terrace out to Cre- or really, what is Crescent, it's Crescent, not Lower Terrace. So, they'll come out in that, that 24-foot wide strip right there.
So, those crosswalks are going, the one that's by the basketball court?
So, we're gonna close those off just to see how, how that works, okay? And so you'll have the crosswalk at the very end, okay? You have one crosswalk when you first come, and you, and we're gonna need signing to say, hey, this is where you cross at that end. Now, if you don't make it there, you come down to where the trailhead is. Because if you look at those crosswalks right now, look at where people are standing, they're standing behind a fence, and I can't even see them. And so, now let's put that with some kids with them and everything else, and now we're gonna step out in traffic.
Are we keeping the third crosswalk after the park? The one before the golf cart rentals?
So, there's two cross, there, there's actually four crosswalks of this road, very redundant, you know? And two of them we're claiming are in good location, the one at the trailhead, because then that makes this whole area, and then the one at the very start, so you're there on that angle, even though it's kinda angled, they don't like the angle, I like things being squared up, but.
Yeah, okay.
That's your two opportunities here, if we sign that right, even if somebody, I hope somebody won't get too disappointed that, oh, I, you know, I have to walk another 50 feet here, but then that'll keep it safer here, and once you get through here, yeah.
They won't, they'll run across the street, we know that.
Yeah.
There's gonna be, it's gonna be blocked across the street.
So, we're gonna be adding the crosswalks, and, let's see what else I got for you here.
I did have a question on the, uh, I know we're removing the parking spaces, and I do think that's a good idea, but I am also still wondering if we're thinking of like a Plan B of other parking areas for rental locals to get to the beach, or to the cottage, the shop?
Yeah, so, we have in our traffic studies, we'll, I think, be bringing some other, uh, potential.
Right.
Uh, that we've been thinking around, Catalina Third, Clarissa, and so it's, right now, this was just a, a doable for what we wanted to get this out, and we can roll that out very soon, because we did that with our traffic team. We think there's some exciting things that could happen back at the house at Third Street there, you know, depending on which direction travel's going and all that. But those are interesting things that, you know, there are opportunities to reuse some real estate that really makes some things happen, you know, that, um, and make it more pedestrian, uh, more people-friendly spaces up in our Hunter Block. And that's, and as we start expanding and attracting people here, we need space, and we need lively spaces, we need active spaces, and that's, that's this whole thing, you know, it's, how do you make a better community out of the whole thing? So, what this is, you're gonna see this roll out, and it's gonna be within this next two weeks, we, we're gonna get some cordons out here before we get that 5,000 passenger cruise ship, and we think we'll have time to get those cordons out, at least on one side there, we gotta do a little bit of deck work, and then get, you know, the rest of everything out, and get some signage out where we got QR codes, so people can interact with this, and we can collect that data. Hopefully, the outside of being totally finished and having that really running is maybe two weeks, okay? But then, we collect data points, we listen to everybody, once we get all that, we're back in front of you saying, hey, here we are, what do we wanna do? Okay?
And have you already spoken to the, the businesses on Crescent and the trailhead and that kind of thing, and, or not?
I've had a conversation with some of, some of the business owners on there and in the trailhead.
So, and along the years, I've liked, uh, like the.
Yeah.
Golf Cart Rental, Trailhead, we had a good conversation about, uh, actually, they, what they said, what we were doing, and we told them, showed it, and they said, hey, but this is great. Um, and Pancake Cottage has always said, hey, they would need more spa, whatever, there's all kinds of opportunities out there, so. But, remember, it's a demo, it's a trial, everything can change back, if nobody likes it, that's why we do these things, okay?
So, if we could just make sure that we have like, um, the proper signage wherever we are gonna tell them to go park, to know which way to go for, I just don't wanna take away business from them, pretty much.
Yes.
We're only removing the four parking spots with this, and, and we've been watching those four parking spots, they're either used by business owners or employees.
For the most part.
And the one can't capitalize.
Somebody's going maybe to go eat, but.
Yeah.
Most part, I mean, and I have photos of it, these are people that are staying there most of the day, and they're worked there, and so, um, highest and best use of real estate, 24-7-365, and what can we do, you know, to make that so that we have a good people place, okay? Cause that's what we're selling here.
Your enthusiasm is always so wonderful.
I, I get excited about.
You do get excited about everything, even this little spike thing, you know, I mean, you just love it all.
Can I please say something?
Yes.
Uh, I love your enthusiasm for the project, I don't like it.
Okay.
Um, we're making sure that there are sidewalks to get everybody in these businesses, but we're not making sure that people have access to these businesses across from the volleyball court and the basketball court. When people get, when people walk in, most people do not go to that first set of, that first crosswalk, they're gonna start hitting the crosswalks between the two, and then you've got the, making the crosswalk bigger by Ben, um, but by then, those people are already heading into town, they're not going to turn to the left and go back up, they're coming in, you know, people are funneling into town. This, this just blocks them from going across the street.
And, and then, and those cord- those cordoned off areas, it's a matter of, and they're back open, you know, so, really, I would say get a good set of data, you know, hold on tight, get a good set of data for.
I, I.
And then we have a good discussion.
Losing those two sidewalk, those two crosswalks is not gonna be beneficial.
And then, that'd be great when we get done, cause we could state that, and we can just say, that's not gonna work, don't include that in our design, okay? And I think that's, that's good, that's a very good point, keep, just keep our ears and eyes wide open, and collect all the data, and then see what we get.
And I, I like the fact that we're just gonna try this out, but, yeah, it, but.
I think that part of what's gonna help solve the concern for that, because I know Misa and the other business owners in that area have those concerns, part of what's gonna help solve that is wayfinding, signage is gonna help.
Yes.
People, every single person is looking for golf carts, and if you tell them, you're gonna find them by cutting across right here and going down that way, everyone's gonna be on that side of the street and not on the side of the street unless their local's trying to get some more quickly. So, like if you watch the 950 boat come in in the morning, you've seen it before, like people are tracking across the street right there, if they don't know that that point is the best point to access the golf carts and bicycle rentals, that's what we need to make clear to them. So, there needs to be signage on the walkway on that side and on this side to point them to that direction. Maybe it's a line on the ground that literally says, go this way for fun transportation things.
Yeah, put some fun signage around, you know, talk to people, hey, we're here to do the.
Don't we have like the big wooden sign right now before the park, where it says like choices and all others?
Yeah, make sure that it gets up high.
Can I, can I just say something? We have a big sign over here, hospital, memorial gardens, nobody knows where they're going. So, I constantly am sending people, bat this way, you're going the wrong way in your golf cart.
I don't know, I, I don't think it's gonna stop, I mean, I, I get your concern, I appreciate it. I, yeah, I hear it too, but I also think if part of what we're trying to do is make it both safer for those stepping out into traffic, that's one of those things, for those locations, I've watched people almost get hit multiple times when hanging out at the park or wherever else.
But now we're gonna put a crosswalk right there, that?
Where?
Isn't that what we're gonna put right there?
The two red spots are not gonna be crosswalks, they're taking the crosswalks away from there.
Those, what are the, what are those two red spots right there?
Down at the bottom.
Where are you looking?
Yeah, we're just telling you, we're gonna, we're gonna cut those off right now on this trial.
Okay, yeah.
And then, so all it is, is a, a belt barrier on the one side, and, and then we'll put wayfinding signing at the first one and at the last one, and hopefully it has a fun message, says, right here, if you wanna go across the street, whatever fun thing we, and then the same thing, hey, you missed it.
Well, I'm even just picturing the regular signs that we have on Front Street that have the businesses, the number of people who look up at those signs to figure out where to go.
But something that's catchy, that catches you and says, if you wanna go that side over there, you go here or here, you know, you've missed that one, you wanna go over there, it's right here, so that, oh, okay, and then you finally get to that, oh, if nothing else, I come right at the end of the pedestrian mall, and I'm dumped right there in the middle of the, you're getting across the intersection, oh, I wanna go back that way, okay, that's not that far.
Right.
Go around, it should be an easy path to get there, but, let's see what we get, okay? Sounds like fun, right?
Yeah, keep our phones on.
I just wanted to say I'm excited to hear the discussion regarding traffic on Lower Terrace and coming back around that way and down the hill. There's been portions of the general plan that we've been looking at for years, trying to look at some of those recommendations for traffic flow, that we've never taken up, and I'm kind of encouraged to see us trying to do that now, so. I know, I'm, I'm curious to see how it goes, I'm curious to see what the feedback is, I'm curious to see, you know, if we can check on the same weeks last year and the year before, and weather related, and whether or not, you know, all the things are saying how many people they're getting in the door, I don't know if the shops keep track of that or sales at least, um, but trying to make sure that we're measuring what it really is, so we can make an accurate decision on it.
I'm wondering, cause I'm looking at the Circuit app right now, and it's so easy to just kinda maneuver around town.
Yeah.
And it'd be really neat, I don't know how far in the future we have to go, but to be neat to be able to just have our own little Catalina maps, where it says, here's a crosswalk, here's.
Right.
How far does so-and-so?
Looking for that, yeah, yeah, we've talked, yeah, we've talked about it.
With a Chambers City map?
Mm-hmm.
You, you didn't, I just threw that in, cause you said you, you have your new city map, so for future, okay? Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
And now we're going to the consent calendar.
Thank you.
All right.
I think you noticed I didn't say this was gonna be a short meeting.
That's from the April 16th, 2024. Total expenditures for April 1st, 2024 through April 19th. Item three, adopt the resolution, accepting the fiscal year 2324 third quarter treasurer's report.
And by the way, we did read this, Matt, your treasurer's report, so we're good. Unless people have questions, I'm gonna pull it, okay?
Item four, adopt the City of Avalon's legislative platform for 2024 that guides the city's support or opposition of regional, state, federal legislation, authorize city's staff to contact. State and federal representatives to advocate for legislative proposals consistent with the guiding principles and policy statements outlined with the 2024 legislative platform.
Does any, would you like to pull any of these?
I'll make a motion to approve items one through four.
I'll second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Potam Lavelle?
Aye.
Mary Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Schickling.
Okay, item number five.
General Business, item number five is a first reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 5-22 of the Avalon Municipal Code regarding the use of projectiles and adoption of exemption findings under California Environmental Quality Act. We'd like council to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance, as stated above, this will forever be known as the Water Balloon Ordinance.
Yeah, um, yeah, I love the word projectile, so that takes up bows and arrows and everything, I guess, that they might be doing. The other thing is, cause this is great, and I'm, whoever, whoever the woman has brought it up, I know there were problems last year and the year before, um, so, it's not just the proj- it's the mess that they make, it's not, it's the danger, but it's also the mess. So, I, I think the, um, the fines are too little.
Scott, what kinda leeway do we have on the fines?
Not much, the state law, like they did with our deer ordinance.
Right.
Penalties, so there is certain things, what we can do is, what I would suggest is, when, when you want to deviate from those, you have to have some evidence that it's not working, so what I'd suggest is we try this for a year, see how it works, see if the fines are not, um, are, are, are not deterring people, and if they're not, then we can make additional findings to justify higher fines.
Oh, okay, okay. And I love the fact that the sheriff's department is gonna agree to help enforce that, because Front Street is a mess, and I think you're all already down there, just make sure that your reserves as well know to, to, to take that seriously, you know, because they're coming there with, with ice chests full of water balloons and everything else, and it would be nice to, since the harbor's gonna be taking care of the, the seaside, if, if the sheriff's is gonna take care of the Front Street, that's awesome. So, thank you. Okay, what's your pleasure?
I will introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon, adding Chapter 5-22 to the Avalon Municipal Code regarding use of projectiles and adoption of exemption findings under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Um, I'd have a quick question, it might be small and possibly dumb, but, um, object, a thing or physical material, so if they're throwing like the necklaces and the candies, I know that we have, but that has to be malicious purpose, but if somebody starts complaining that they're throwing it too aggressively, cause I have a feeling that's gonna happen, are they gonna use this to get somebody in trouble?
I mean, I think the idea is that they'll, they'll certainly use their discretion on people that they're citing, but, uh, over the last several years on 4th of July, I mean, people weren't lobbing water balloons playfully, they were throwing them with the intent to harm, so.
Right. And so, okay, so you see them do that, so in everybody's ticket books or in our little things, there, there's a little administrative thing where they actually get a ticket presented to them?
They, we have the ability to issue the citations, yeah.
And sheriffs as well.
With code and sheriffs.
Okay, excellent, okay, good.
I'll second.
We didn't second it, any comments?
No.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Potam Lavelle?
Aye.
Mary Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Schickling.
And finally, on our general business, item six is related to USDA Reconnect Grant, And this is authorizing a budget amendment allocating one hundred thousand dollars to fund one oh five two five dash six five four seven to establish matching funds for a potential USDA Reconnect Round Five Grant Award.
I'll, do you wanna, I'll go ahead and just give info about what we're doing. So, um, as part of the connectivity group, um, which is an ad hoc committee that was started several years ago, um, we have endeavored to help solve some of the concerns and issues with the level of connectivity, both cellular and broadband. And, um, Lance Ware, who is a member of that connect, connectivity group, has, um, gone through several rounds of applications with the USDA Reconnect Grant. And we believe that we're at a point where we possibly have the best, um, attempt currently to move forward with this grant, um, based on some meetings with the USDA team to help with the mapping of the service area. And, um, the portion that we're trying to meet tonight is to have a matching fund set up. A number of other entities, including, uh, Love Catalina, have also agreed to put in, uh, similar or greater funds, um, totaling just about four million dollars. So, our hundred thousand dollars would be the final amount needed to make the, uh, twenty-five percent match for that grant and, um, hopefully allow us to be successful in getting funding from the USDA to run a single line, um, for fiber. It would be subsea fiber that would then be, uh, open source for any entity to be able to utilize, which means it would also help create competition and hopefully bring down prices in service too. Um, so, all to say that, um, what we're asking for tonight is to approve this. Part of the discussion right now is that Gateway City's council of governments had agreed to, um, look at being the applicant for this grant. Part of that discussion is still up in the eras of right now because of the requirements of, um, the grant and making sure that whoever is applying is responsible for the future upkeep and maintenance of that project as well. Um, and so, I know that Lance, uh, Lance is here in the audience tonight. And, um, what we're hoping for is the approval of this funds to be set aside for this, um, from this year's current budget so that it can be allocated to that grant, should it be successful. And the other piece of this puzzle that I'll bring up now, but maybe for a future discussion, is there is also another grant that he's currently working on with the CPUC called the, um, Future Funding Account, which is the FFA. And so with that one also, the possibility of being successful may end up hinging on a part of the funds being made through matching grant funds as well. Um, so if USDA was not successful but FFA was, we may use the grants for that potentially and we'll come back officially with that request at a future meeting. Um, but if, uh, either one of them was to be successful, then the funds would be utilized. If neither was successful, then it would not be utilized.
So we're just setting aside.
Correct.
So, question, um, I thought you were talking about the undersea being thirty million dollars.
It is.
So, so, how does sixteen get there?
Thirty-two million dollars is the redundant two-way, um, frame that we'd love to have, which would create redundancy both, uh, from two different counties. Therefore, if one of them broke down, the other one was still operational and functional. Um, and then there's also potential, if we have the redundant, uh, format for this, to help eventually also service San Clemente Island through that route too, which they've been looking at wanting to do for quite some time, so just to added benefit for someone in the area. Um, the grant for the USDA Reconnect Round Five is sixteen million. And that sixteen million dollars is a single line. So, what we're trying to do is say we're willing to start with a single line if that's what can be approved. Let's see if we can get that first and go from there.
And do we know, even if we got the single line, we know that there would be people that, 'cause they would have to pay that, it'd be included in this?
Uh, so what it would be is there would be agreements with, um, AVX networks that would, um, you know, be connected with, uh, AT&amp;T, Verizon and other cellular providers, Lockett, Catalina Broadband and other broadband providers. Um, even some that are not currently here on the island have expressed interest if this comes to fruition. Um, and so, what that looks like is, um, there, Lance, I think you could speak to this, has a, um, he's wanting to make it so that it can provide competition to the island, so that people can get access who currently don't have levels of access they should be getting.
Great job, Lisa. I, I think, um, to your question, Mayor, um, the USDA grant has this twenty-five percent match, which is where we're trying to gather the funds for that. It's non-redundant and also has a twenty-five million dollar maximum. Otherwise, we could've applied for redundancy, but still meeting the match at the four million dollars would turn into eight. As Lisa has stated, we're still working through some of the issues with Gateway Cities on operational aspects of it that the USDA requires to be documented upfront. Uh, in parallel, there's the California Public Utilities Commission, um, that you seen it was graceful enough to, uh, speak to as well, that we seem to be very close in the running for it. That has no practical limit on the amount you can apply for. There's other applicants. We were the only unchallenged applicant in Los Angeles County. Uh, we've had fairly extensive dialogue with the reviewer of that, John Baker, uh, and whatnot. And so, they're kind of saying, "Come back to us with as sharp a pencil as you can, bring all your matching funds to the table, uh, so we can hopefully service as many of the other applicants in the pool." So they had a hundred and seven million dollars roughly for Los Angeles County. Our number was actually thirty-six million. We've secured, um, three million upfront from one of the largest telcos, uh, that would vastly improve performance for the mobile network, uh, on the island. Uh, and as Lisa said, the, the network itself, you have to open access it. So Catalina Broadband's been engaged in conversation about what it would take, what it would cost to purchase capacity. Uh, but we're still being asked, "Hey, how much money can you take off the table through matching funds to let us redistribute this and do other projects over town?" Uh, so I would ask that, as you guys consider this, we take into account not only USDA Reconnect that has not, no redundancy to it, that will be much better than what we have, but also this, uh, the federal funding account from the Public Utilities Commission, which feels imminent and, uh, a high degree of engagement with them, uh, even to the point of looking at our agenda today to see where that stands. Thank you all.
Okay, and so let me, so COG has received probably through, it's just for us?
Yeah.
Okay, and what if they don't want to be the sponsor, for lack of a better word?
So, if that is to not happen, then this funding would not be happening for this round. Um, basically what happens is the application process for USDA Reconnect Round Five has a ten-point award for any, um, application that comes from a city, local government or nonprofit. And so, unfortunately, because our city staff being basically one person that's running the grants department right now is so overwhelmed with a number of capital improvement projects we heard about this evening and tracking for all of that, um, it was determined that it was not a priority that could be met within our own city staff. Um, Hector De La Torre and his team, uh, Jerry Hatton, were kind enough to, um, offer to take that on because, um, they've been working on a broadband plan that encompasses, um, all of the twenty-eight cities except for us. We're the twenty-eighth city that doesn't get the funding sources from what they're working on currently. And this was a way for them to help offset that being, uh, the issue that we're not part of that plan for funding and we're currently not part of their plans, even for some of the same monies that, that AVX has applied for. Um, there's a grant in there that's under review for the Gateway Cities COG for six cities in South, uh, Los Angeles that are also equally well-deserving.
Right.
Um, so, but there's also a number of other entities, AT&amp;T being one of them, who have applied for similar funding to do projects that all overlap each other, where ours is one that does not overlap anyone else, but provides a great level of service to a great number of people, even though the residential level is low.
Right.
So, yeah.
And COG is our only, um, option, I guess, there's no...
We've talked about possibly looking at county resources or other entities for resources as well in that area, but so far there's not been an offer or the ability to do that yet. Um, I did have a conversation with Jennifer Lamarc today, which was very positive. Um, nothing to report on that yet, but I'm hoping for a good, uh, response back as well, which may either be, uh, the potential for matching funds as well or, um, potentially down the road, some additional service and help there, so.
So, if, well, so if COG doesn't wanna go through with this, this is dead?
It could be, unless we decide that we wanna also say that the FFA may be a spot where we could add matching funds to help for the sake of improving the project. I think when any of these grant entities see a city involved in the application process, whether that's actually doing the application or putting money into the application, the likelihood of them seeing that it actually is a necessary or good project is good, right? Yeah. And we're not just saying that, we've said it all along. We've said, we've offered letters of support for every application that anyone who's done work for this group has done. Um, but we haven't done that yet either financially. We've done it with a lot of staff time, so thank you Devon and, and team for helping out with stuff with me for sure. Um, but we haven't done it financially otherwise yet, so.
Do we have to put this on the agenda again for the FFA or could we just add it now to say that if it doesn't, isn't used for this, we could just use it for the FFA, so it doesn't have to be brought back?
That's the, I'm just gonna ask that question as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could probably amend that, but I think we just haven't dove into that to see exactly what that's gonna entail. We might have to bring it back to you anyway.
Okay.
Depending on the application, so.
And you have Jim right behind you. Lance, you wanted to comment? Thank you.
I, I just wanted to add that before I even accepted the job to come here ten years ago, I went around and talked to businesses about their greatest need and this was identified then. That was twenty-fourteen.
Yeah.
In my first year's work plan, helping to increase and, and improve the quality of broadband and cellular service was item number one. It was in twenty-seventeen that, at, in a council meeting at the time of, of one of my annual reports, that we actually identified that we would have a council member officially sit on the Connectivity Group Committee and that we would then formally begin outreach to Verizon, to AT&amp;T, to, um, oh shoot, I just drew a blank on the, the one that we buy the wholesale service from, um...
Lockett.
Not Lockett, um, 'cause they weren't on the scene yet.
Sprint or T-Mobile?
Yeah, GeoLinks and, you know, and so on. So that's when we, we really kinda got some legs. Cindy, uh, McGugan-Cassidy was the initial council member who sat on that committee. And along the way, it, it's been like a spider. I mean, every time you, you just get a little bit of traction, there's like this other place you've gotta go down that leg and, and address that. So it's the definition of rurality. It's, it's where we appear on the map or whether we drop off of the map.
Right.
It's the, the quality of service, it's the available service providers. Um, uh, I mean, it's, it has just been unbelievably bifurcated and then comes back to a conversation. And we are the closest that we have ever been to being able to say success. So, that is, it is because of that that our board got on, on, behind this and made a pledge of a hundred thousand and I would encourage you to do, do so as well tonight.
Comments from staff or council?
No, just thank you for all the work you guys have done. I mean...
It's been a lot. And I, I do have to say a note of thanks also to our previous and current, um, representatives, county, state, federal, um, they've all written letters of support, offered staff time. Um, Assembly Member Lowenthal especially and Brian from his office have been so helpful in wanting to keep this conversation going and trying to push things wherever they, hear something, they mention us for it. So, um, I, I think that, you know, I think that it makes sense for us right now. I think that for what the community would be getting, for what the visitors would be getting and for what city staff, I mean, the layers of what this would impact if it were to come to fruition, when it comes to fruition, 'cause it's gonna happen, um, would be huge. So, um, it would take a stressor away from people. It would hopefully, um, engage competition in an area where there hasn't been any. It will do a lot of things that we wanna see happen.
Then I will make a motion to authorize a budget amendment allocating one hundred thousand to fund one zero five two five dash six five four seven to establish matching funds for a potential USDA Reconnect Round Five Grant Award.
Okay, I have one question before seventy seconds. The whereas, funding would only be expended if the grant is awarded and after an agreement is established to find ownership under potential credits for broadband services. But that would mean, and also all of the necessary funding is in place?
Correct.
I mean, does that say that or not really?
I don't think the grant gets awarded unless all, the, sorry, I don't think, I know, the grant doesn't get awarded unless all the funding is in place.
Okay.
It's required as part of the application process.
And, and just another question, 'cause I'm not in all of these meetings.
Yes.
The sixteen million, how solid is that number? I mean, 'cause you know by the time, if it happens in a year, is sixteen million, eighteen million, or?
Yeah, we've revisited those with our marine expert multiple times as recently as these last two grant cycles. So, we're fairly comfortable. Um, they'll need a refresh after this year for sure, but there was some room in there for fuel surcharges and all the other stuff that we're seeing here for the barge and everything else. Pretty confident in this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. There's been a motion?
Oh, yeah, Michael motioned.
Was there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Call for the vote?
Uh, Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Lovell?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, Councilmember Schickling.
Very much. Very much.
And fi-, and finally, we have closed session, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Island Enterprises versus City of Avalon, case number twenty, LBCB zero zero two nine one.
Okay. Okay.